Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the business meetings for the City of Prattville this evening. We do have one public hearing tonight, and then we will move into our council agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll for us, please?
Counselor Sanders.
Here.
Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Chambers.
Here.
Counselor Merritt.
Here.
Counselor Whaley.
Here.
Counselor Stritchett.
Counselor Bean.
Here.
Having a quorum present, I will read in public hearing item number one. Item number one is an ordinance to rezon property located inside the corporate limits off of Doster Road from FAR, Forest Agricultural and Recreation, to M2 General Industry. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of ordinance number one this evening? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak against ordinance number one? Hearing none, we will close this public hearing. At this time, I do invite you to stand for our pledge of allegiance and our invocation, which will be given by Counselor Chambers this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, may the Spirit of wisdom and discernment be with us all as we gather to serve this community. May our hearts be open to compassion and our minds guided by justice, integrity, and fairness. Together, let us seek solutions that uplift and unite, always remembering our shared duty to promote the well-being of every resident. May patience, understanding strengthen our deliberations, and may humility remind us of the privilege and responsibility we hold. As stewards of this city, we remain committed to inclusiveness, listening to diverse voices, and fostering an environment of respect and collaboration. Let our collective efforts be rooted in hope and purpose, inspiring trust and confidence within the community we serve. May kindness and humility guide our actions, and may we find joy and fulfillment in the work of building a better, more equitable future for all. And as we move forward together, may we be blessed with clarity, resilience, and a shared vision ever dedicated to the common good. May our leadership be a beacon of hope, guiding this city toward peace, prosperity, and lasting harmony. In Jesus' mighty name, we pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Sanders.
Here.
Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Chambers.
Here.
Counselor Merritt.
Here.
Counselor Whaley.
Here.
Counselor Stritchett.
Here.
Counselor Bean.
Here.
Having a quorum present, I do call this meeting to order. The character trait of the month is compassion, which is investing whatever is necessary to show concern through our words and through our actions. At this time, we look into approving our minutes from the city council meeting, which was held on April the 15th, 2025. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And our minutes are approved. At this time, we will welcome comments from persons present tonight regarding items that are on tonight's agenda only. There is a second comment time that will welcome others who would like to speak on something that we are not voting on tonight. But anyone who wishes to speak on anything that we are voting on tonight, we ask that you line up here at the podium, at the right side between the two walls, and you will be called up to print your name and address, and have three minutes to address the council. We ask that you do state your name and address first, and then begin to speak. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on any item that is on our agenda this evening? Yes, sir. Come forward. Yes, sir.
I hear you, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. three minutes to address us.
My name's David Jox, and my address, that's what you need to do?
Yes, your place.
Yeah, 1021 Old Ridge Road, Pratt, Old Ridge Road East, Prattville, Alabama, 36066. And what do I need to do now?
Just state your place, whatever it is.
Oh, they've got us listed on the ordinance. If you go to number 12, where they're... We're not opposing the, what they're wanting to do as far as chip and seal on the road, but the, what, the problem is, we're county, and they got us listed in the GIS as city. And we're not. The Powell's don't understand it. Nobody understands it. And the whole row in the front, I've got them all right here. I've got signatures and everything. Sorry. But they're, they're against it. They want to be left in the county. They do not want to be city.
If you have any documentation, if you will begin to work with our city clerk, that's not something we can deal with this evening, but if you will meet with her and share any documentation that you have with her that could prove that you are in or out, and y'all can begin to look at the maps together and work towards solving this problem.
And when do I need to do that?
During our working hours, business hours, between eight and five, Monday to Friday, would be...
Okay, but they got this, they got it listed as a city of Prattville to pave that road when that's a county road.
Mr. Mayor, yes, sir.
Thank you for coming down, but actually, we do have a working agreement with Otoga County.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. You have a collaboration. Correct.
Right.
But it should say Otoga, shouldn't it? Shouldn't it say county?
Well, I know there's some other properties I know, because you're on the right side or the east side.
I'm on the corner lot, right beside the Harrods.
Okay.
All of us were...
I know on the left side, there's some others that are not inside the corporate limits. And so, as far as the project we're doing here, it will have no effect on you guys whether you're inside or outside of the county.
It won't. So the chip, so the chip and seal project that you'd be doing there, it has no effect?
That's a city road.
I mean, we're, if you drive on it, then it will be a better ride.
Yeah, that's great. I'm not against that.
But as far as, as far as your property, it's not going to affect your property, except for a little bit less dust coming over.
Hey, that's good for the citizens. I agree with that.
But thank you for coming down.
My concern, is it, is it a city road, or is it going to be still county, or how's that getting done?
It's basically recognized as a city street.
Okay.
Now...
Because our concern was that we're showing GIS and that it was...
Yeah, it's changed.
Yeah, it's changed. And so, this just came about, and we filed a form with a clerk that's stating, requesting that...
Well, just to give you another example, rolling hills on the other side of Prattville, roughly 50/50 of it is in the city and out.
Okay.
Gardner Road is about 50/50. So houses, and the way the, the general rule of thumb is unless you have two houses on both sides on the, of the street, then it's county until you have those two houses that are inside.
And across the street is the Powell's from us, and everybody's...
But as far as...
Our concern was just that Ridge Trail and Ridge Terrace are getting paved, and it's showing that they're city, and we didn't understand that we were, because it's, it looks like we're being, we've been annexed.
Yeah, and we're not.
And all of that's supposed to be county from us, all the way behind there.
The GIS is wrong, yeah. But it does have a disclaimer saying it can be wrong, but it...
Okay.
I just want to make that known.
Well, it's, it's recognized with the city and the county that this is a city street, even though there are some small portions that are not in it. But we have been in contact with the county on this as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Rice, please come forward, state your name and address for the council, and you'll have three minutes to address us.
Blake Rice. I'm a resident of Opelika, Alabama. I am the petitioner for regular agenda item seven, and I would like to formally request that that item be withdrawn.
Thank you, sir. I know that some counselors have been in contact with you, and we've been looking at this, and we will be dealing with that as we get to number seven. Thank you for your request.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You'll have three minutes to address us.
Diane Rowling, 119 Magnolia Drive. I just have two questions. Okay, the first one is resolution number 13 for Buffalo Rock. They're getting the beverage service for the stadium. Why isn't there an amount listed? Someone spoke with Buffalo Rock after the bid opening, and they said they gave a one-page breakdown of the cost. That's the first thing. Number 14, Doster Well Improvements, it shows $75,000. The 2425, 2024, 2025 capital improvement budget shows $511,000. Why the difference?
I don't have either answer for you at this point, but we can look into those and get back with you later on.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name and address for the council, and you'll have three minutes to address us.
Yes, Dennis Mullins, 521 Weatherly Trail. I'm going to be talking about ordinance number four tonight. So I want to thank the council for being active on seeing the need to do some responsibleness growth. So I want to thank them for doing that, but yet I still have some concern. My concern is, is the limited scope of what we are going to be talking about here. Talking about the gas stations, the vape shops, the other things, but I think that scope needs to be expanded myself, because it's still, all the other things still bring in an element of public concern, traffic. So there's other things to do, too. So I do think the council needs to consider expanding that scope. Secondly, is the duration and the limit of the scope. I think that scope needs to be expanded, not to six months, but I think at least a year, because it takes a lot of time. When you're talking about zoning and things like that, you got to have meetings to have meetings to have meetings to get some decisions made. So I think the limited time of six months is not enough. I think it needs to be at least a year. So I think I've spoken with Councilman Whaley about that, and I think we're going to be talking about that tonight, but I just wanted to make that clear, that I think it ought to be a year. But other than that, I applaud you for your efforts in, in being proactive.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins. Anyone further who wishes to speak on any item on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we will move forward. Mr. Mayor, would you come forward with your report, please?
Yes, ma'am. If I might ask for a point of privilege?
Yes, sir.
And I'd like to ask Chief Thompson to come up, and a few of his friends, as he sees fit.
Before we start, I want to thank the council for their support over the years. And there's a possibility before this year ends, we might be at 100 officers in the City of Prattville, which is thanks to y'all for voting on that. But I'd also like to recognize Assistant Chief for his efforts in recruiting. He's done an outstanding job on getting us to where we're at today, and we have some outstanding recruits somewhere in the academy now, and they're leading the way over there. So very proud of what Chief Hassel's done with his recruitment. Thank you. So if I could have Crime Stoppers and Investigator Lively come up.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing us to come back into what I call my second home. I'm Tony Garrett. I represent Central Alabama Crime Stoppers. Behind me is Ray Wagner. You're, you're bred, born native here. And we also have Jerome Jones and Kemmer. And tonight, we're not coming to complain. We're not coming to say anything bad about Prattville, we're just coming to recognize one of your own, Detective Lively. I'm going to read off the press release that we're going to release in the next day or so. On March 6, 2025, Central Alabama Crime Stoppers awarded Investigator Mark Lively the title of Prattville Police Department's 2024 Officer of the Year. Prattville Police Chief Mark Thompson wrote, "It is my honor to nominate Investigator Mark Lively as our nominee for the Crime Stoppers Officer of the Year Award. Investigator Lively has been with the Prattville Police Department Investigative Division since 2023, where he has consistently demonstrated exceptional investigative skills. On September 3, 2024, Investigator Lively was assigned a case involving theft reported at various Guardian Credit Union branches. Through diligent investigation, it was revealed that suspects were using counterfeit debit credit cards to access victims' accounts via ATM in Montgomery and Prattville. His efforts led to dissemination of a BOLO for the suspect vehicle and individual, which resulted in a high-speed pursuit and eventual apprehension in Montgomery, Alabama. Following, following the arrest, Investigator Lively uncovered a fraudulent theft ring involving three suspects. They had conducted deposits, withdrawals, inquiries, and transfers across 23 separate Guardian Credit Union accounts, resulting in a loss of $212,000 plus, with additional losses pending. Using investigative tools like transaction analysis, video and imagery, and digital phone extractions, he connected multiple fraudulent activities to the suspects, ultimately discrediting their defense and producing evidence leading to federal charges. The suspects were indicted on 93 charges. Investigator Mark Lively, on behalf of Central Alabama Crime Stoppers, we are honored to present you with the Prattville Police Department's 2024 Officer of the Year Award." Now, he's going to get a nice little goody bag from Crime Stoppers, that can go up states. He's also going to get the nice little plaque that he's holding there. He's going to get a certificate right here that states that, and you're going to get the letter that Chief Thompson wrote to us. Please keep this, because if you mess up, you might need this. With no other questions or any responses, we're going to turn it back over to the chief, if you want to say something, and we're going to turn it to the mayor.
Thank you for what you've done.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And we're going to take the family. We'll go back here, because we've got a full docket tonight, so we'll get out of your way. But thank y'all for your support. Mayor?
Thank you, Chief.
One last thing. Thank you for supporting Crime Stoppers. We are your crime stopper program. Anytime that there's something going on in Prattville, we come, and we're here for you if you need us. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, and thank you. And thank his family as well, because it's, it's a family event as well, so.
Don't mind.
Clear path for him out.
That's okay. Thank y'all. And if I might extend that point of privilege, Ms. Stell is here in the room. She'd like to give a report, an audit report, so she would come forward. And should be good news. We'll see.
It is. It's good news. All right. So, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Following that's going to be something. It's great to see all the support the families have around here. My name is Crystal Stell, and I'm with Malden Jenkins. I'm here to present the results of the fiscal year 24 audit. In front of you, you should have my presentation. That'll be this one here that should be on top. I'm going to move fairly quickly, because I know that the agenda is quite extensive today, but if there's anything that I'm going too quickly on, or you have a question, please feel free to, to stop me as I'm going through. The agenda's going to be, we're going to talk about the engagement team, the audit opinion, compliance report, some required communications, and trends. So if you will flip to the first page, this page has given a brief overview of our firm, Malden Jenkins. We're a regional accounting firm, consistently ranked in the top accounting firms in the US. We serve over 725 governmental clients, with over 175 receiving the ACTFOR, which, I mean, the GFOA Certificate of Excellence. Within this 175-plus, the City of Prattville is in that number. So this achievement reflects dedication and hard work of the city, so congratulations on that. This year's engagement team was Meredith Lipson. She was the quality review partner, then James Spence, the engagement partner, and myself as the engagement director and lead. Next page. The audit opinion, fiscal year 24. We performed under the accordance of GAS and government auditing standards. As with any audit, this is reasonable assurance, but not absolute assurance. We do not test 100% of all transactions, but we do feel that reasonably the financials are free of material misstatement. We did not audit the Public Library or the Airport Authority. Those were audited by separate auditors. We did rely on their reports for the overall report. The opinion was an unmodified, which is a clean opinion. That's the best you can get. So congratulations on that. Next page. This would be on compliance. This refers to the single audit report. There were no material weaknesses and no instances of noncompliance. During the current year, there were two major programs that were tested under the 2024 Uniform Guidance, which has a threshold of 750,000 of federal expenditures within one year. That will increase next year. That threshold goes up to 1 million for the fiscal year 25. Moving on. This is financial statements and notes. Kind of keep it very brief. This is government-wide. Total assets and outflows increased about 8.3 million, while liabilities decreased about 7.4 million. The city's net position increased in fiscal year 24 by approximately 15.8 million. These are all favorable for the statement of net position. I have detailed out some of the things that were primary drivers for those increases and decreases, but again, you can, you can take a glance at those later. The next page, still looking at government-wide. Although both program revenue and general revenue decreased and expenses increased, the city did maintain a positive net change for fiscal year 24. Primary drivers in the decline of revenue related to some charges for service and capital grants. The capital grants being the majority of that, around a decrease of 1.8 million. The greatest increase in expenses were in the public safety area, approximately 2.2 million over last year. Footnotes, the city did implement a new GASB standard, standard 100 for the current year. There's not a lot that you're going to see that changed from last year's ACTFOR to this year's. The only thing you may see is where we have to now state that anything that was a major fund in one year and is not a major fund in the, the next year, we have to identify that. So you may see something in the current year as you're going through that says previously major. That's, that's about the extent. Additions to note five and six of the ACTFOR are other things that you may notice. Last year, the city implemented GASB 96, which has to do with your subscription-based information technology arrangements. So you will see the right-to-use asset and the associated liabilities in those charts. All right, the next page. Now we're moving from government-wide, and we're going to look at general fund only. This is kind of a breakout of revenue streams. It's consistent with prior years. General fund revenues totaled about 61.7 million. The largest of these streams being sales tax, second being license and permits, and property tax being third. Your sales tax was approximately 38.7 million, with license being about 8.5, and property being about 4.3 million. Overall, the year-to-year difference between the general fund was just over 900,000, or about 1.5%. All right, next page. Moving on from revenues, this is general fund expenditures. Slightly up from last year, but still considered consistent and comparable year-over-year. Total expenditures are around 45.5 million, largest being in public safety, at about 19.6 million. Second was general government at about 10 million, and public works at third, three-point, I mean, excuse me, 6.4 million. Overall, general fund revenues and expenditures do seem to be in line with other governments that we're auditing that are about your same size. So although that has increased, it's nothing significant. Next page, we'll be looking at general fund revenues, expenditures, and transfers. This graph, really what we do is we want to show a depiction of the gap between revenue and expenditures over consecutive five years. You can tell that there has been a decline in that gap in the current year. For fiscal year 24, the primary driver of this was an increase in transfers out of the general fund. So that's why those numbers are much closer this year. I think there was around 19.5 million transferred to capital projects, and about 3.6 to internal service. Next page. Still talking about general fund only. This excludes any transfers that could have skewed the numbers on the previous page. GFOA recommends a baseline of 25 to 30% of unassigned funds over expenditures. The calculation for the city as of 9/30/24 was 44%. So that's great. The unassigned fund balance was 19.9 million. Next page, we're going to kind of get out of the numbers a little bit. This is the required communications that needs to happen for every audit. Significant accounting policies are found in note one of your ACTFOR. Policies used by the city are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and the city is not involved in any issues for which guidance is not available. Management representation is received at the end of each audit. It's a written representation about the accuracy and completeness that has been received as of the date. Continuing on with communications, we were not aware of any outside accountants or consultants that were addressed during the fiscal year 24 audit. We had no significant issues with management. They have been absolutely amazing to work with. Things are prompt and very well-kept, so we appreciate that. The only audit adjustment was one, but it had a net effect of zero. So it was an increase in revenue, I mean, an increase in receivables and an allowance. So there was no effect on the line, the bottom line. Malden Jenkins continues to be independent with regard to the city, which is required. The following page, I know this seems like a lot on here, but this is just details. We try to provide the pronouncements, so new things that are coming down the line. The only two that are going to be relevant for the City of Prattville for fiscal year 25 will be statement number 101 and 102. But we have provided kind of an overview, so you guys could have that information on all of them. The following one is more pending projects. Again, this is more information just for you to be aware of. These things are just projects as of today. All right, these last three pages, I'm not going to waste your time, but it's to provide information of additional services that Malden Jenkins can offer. Many times we find that we have clients that have certain needs, and they don't realize that those services are available. So we've provided them for you to look at at your leisure. Should you guys decide that there's anything that you would want to inquire about, we would be happy to meet. Otherwise, we appreciate the opportunity to work with the city and look forward to the future. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Stills. Do any counselors have any questions for our auditor? Thank you so much for the time and energy you put into this. I enjoyed working with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And it's always good to get a good report like that. And anytime the council is ready, we'll be glad to put that on the city website when, when instructed. But good evening, counselors again. I hope everyone is having a good week. I want to take the time to recognize our teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week. I know we have some educators up here. And thank y'all. We know your role is critical to inspiring and making a difference in all lives. Thank you for choosing to be a teacher. Also want to take the time to thank all of our nurses, as it is Nurses Week as well. We know the, the role of nurses is absolutely the, the health of healthcare, the heart of healthcare, and thank you for all, to all of our nurses. I'm sure each of you are aware, but Prattville has been awarded $338,000 plus in state funding for the resurfacing of Northington Road. It's part of our Rebuild Alabama Act grant program. This project will move forward within one year of funding, improving safety and drivability for residents and visitors alike. Like to thank Governor Kay Ivey, Senator Chambliss, Representative Starnes, and Representative Kelvin Lawrence for supporting this project. Pending council approval on agenda items six and 12, and I guess I probably should have started off, counselors, I've got some good news and bad news, and y'all know what that means. But with that approval, street paving and the city and the chip seal work will likely begin around mid-June, council decides to move forward on that. And I want to thank everybody for working all together to try to get this project going. And with this Northington Road Project, Rebuild Alabama Act, that will have to come back before y'all. y'all, and maybe at that time, we might actually have found some additional monies, because I believe in our road paving, our street paving project list, we had some alternates. And so we're working very hard to find some additional fundings to come back to this body, so maybe we can expand our projects on that. Some remember several budgets ago, many budgets ago, we actually took our, some of our tobacco taxes and had coined a little phrase, "black smoke for black tops," and we might try to see if we can use some of that to help fund for some of our paving, additional paving projects. But councilors, as we all know, we've seen a lot of positive growth in our community. However, sometimes we need to assess the impact of certain businesses for the public safety, public health, and neighborhood character. Appreciate all the conversation about a moratorium that I've been having with so many, and I ask you to support Agenda Item 4, the temporary moratorium on package stores, convenience stores, gas stations, and vape shops, I think is very much needed, and so look forward to working with everybody on that. Councilors, I would also like to leave everyone this evening with some very good news. We received notice today that S&amp;P Global Ratings has raised its long-term bond rating for the City of Prattville one notch from AA negative to AA, based largely on economic growth and the strong financial footprint that we have. So I certainly appreciate all the hard work. And going back to the audit report that we just received, I would like to thank this council, our department heads, so many various other employees as well, but most certainly, because without all of us working together, our financial footprint would not be what it is today. And so that's been a lot of dedication from so many. But two I'd like to actually ask this council to give a big round of applause to is our financial team back over here, Daniel Oakley and Carly G. Simmons. I believe this is 10 years straight for winning our, 10 years straight for being recognized as, help me out. What award do y'all get every year it seems like now?
Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in General.
I hope y'all heard that. So that's what I meant to say. But Madam President, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do any councilors have any questions or comments for the mayor? Thank you, sir. At this time, we will move into reports from the council on any special committees. Counselor Sanders, do you have a report this evening?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Jackson?
No.
Counselor Chambers?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Merrick?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Whaley?
No, ma'am.
And I have none. Tonight, we do have the opportunity to create a consent agenda. Items that we could possibly place on the consent agenda include Resolution Number 1, to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost for the removal of garbage and rubbish at 145 Chester Street. Resolution Number 2, to authorize the city attorney to fix, affix the cost for the removal of garbage and rubbish at 629 Lower Kingston Road. Resolution Number 3, to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost for the removal of garbage and rubbish at 610 Vendale Road. Resolution Number 4, to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost for the removal of garbage and rubbish at 743 William Wood Drive. Resolution Number 5, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 1456 South Memorial Drive, Lot A, a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number 6, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 1380 Blue Jays Place, a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expense pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number 7, to surplus various items of personal property from the police department. Resolution Number 8, to surplus various items of personal property from the City of Prattville. Resolution Number 9, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 410 County Road 4, a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number 10, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 719 Cranbrook Drive, a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number 11, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 434 Water Street, a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number 12, to set a public hearing to declare the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at 1456 South Memorial Drive, Lot A, 434 Water Street, and 1667 Buena Vista Boulevard to be unsafe and a public nuisance, and order their abatement pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number 13, to authorize procurement of a grant administration firm and an engineering firm for the development of a Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, application, and authorize the scheduling and advertisement of a public hearing. And Resolution Number 14, to authorize an agreement regarding the properties at 516 and 520 East Main Street. Do I hear a motion to create such a consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding creating this consent agenda? All in favor of creating the consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And the consent agenda is now properly before us. Do I hear a motion to adopt this consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And the consent agenda is adopted. So at this time, we will move into our regular agenda, starting with ordinance number 1. Ordinance number 1 is to rezone property located inside the corporate limits off of Doster Road from FAR, Forest Agricultural and Recreation, to M2, General Industry. Item number 1 was read in at the April 1 council meeting and addressed at tonight's public hearing. It is now properly before us. Is there any discussion regarding ordinance number 1? Hearing none. All in favor of ordinance number 1, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And ordinance number 1 is adopted. Item number 2 is also an ordinance. This is to grant a franchise agreement to Spectrum Southeast LLC, also known as Charter Communications Incorporated, to construct, operate, and maintain a cable system in the City of Prattville, and to set forth the conditions accompanying the grant of the franchise, providing for the regulation and use of the system and public right-of-way. Counselor Chambers, will you introduce this ordinance by title only, please?
Yes, ma'am. To grant a franchise agreement to Spectrum Southeast LLC, known as Charter Communications Incorporated, to construct, operate, and maintain a cable system in the City of Prattville, and to set forth the conditions accompanying the grant of the franchise, providing for regulation and use of the system and the public right-of-way. So moved, ma'am.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. By point of order, we must suspend the rules in order to vote on this ordinance tonight. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you conduct a roll call vote for us, please?
Counselor Sanders?
Yay.
Counselor Jackson?
Yay.
Counselor Chambers?
Yeah.
Counselor Merrick?
Yay.
Counselor Whaley?
Yay.
Counselor Bean?
Yay.
The rules are now suspended, and this ordinance number 2 is properly before us. Is there any discussion on ordinance number 2? Yes, sir. Mr. Jackson?
Why is it that he doesn't have to read all this here?
He doesn't want me to.
How long have you got? What time is your bedtime? All right. I'm sorry, we're just making a little light of our lengthy agenda. This is a rather unusual night for us, so bear with us tonight. Thank you for being here. All right, we do now have this before us. Is there further discussion on ordinance number 2? Hearing none. All in favor of ordinance number 2, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And ordinance number 2 is adopted. Item number 3 is also an ordinance, and this is to amend the City of Prattville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 62, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3, Vehicle Operation, Division 2, Speed Restrictions, Sections 62 to 77 through 62 to 84. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this ordinance by title only?
Why, ma'am? Thank you. To amend City of Prattville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 62, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3, Vehicle Operation, Division 2, Speed Restrictions, Sections 62 through 77 through 62, 62 to 84. So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. By point of order, we must suspend the rules in order to vote on ordinance number 3 tonight. Do I hear a motion to suspend these rules?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, will you conduct a roll call vote for us, please?
Counselor Sanders?
Yay.
Counselor Jackson?
Yay.
Counselor Chambers?
Yay.
Counselor Merrick?
Yay.
Counselor Whaley?
Yay.
Counselor Bean?
Yay.
The rules are now suspended, and ordinance number 3 is properly before us. Is there any discussion regarding ordinance number 3? All right, all in favor of ordinance number 3, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And ordinance number 3 is adopted. Item number 4 is also an ordinance, and this is to declare a temporary moratorium on permits and approvals for package stores, convenience stores, gas stations, and vape shops in the corporate limits of Prattville. Counselor Whaley, will you introduce this ordinance in full, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas the City of Prattville has had numerous new package stores, convenience stores, gas stations, and vape shops establish business within the corporate limits within recent years, and whereas these business establishments have become highly concentrated throughout the city, giving rise to safety concerns, traffic concerns, increases in crime and general public safety concerns, and whereas these businesses may be classified by the following license codes pursuant to Section 38-321 of the City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. 312-5921 Lounge Class 2 Package Store IB, 447-5541 Gasoline Retail G, and whereas there is a need for the city to review its existing zoning ordinance to make necessary adjustments and improvements as to these types of business establishments, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville desires to temporarily pause the issuance of permits and approvals for package stores, convenience stores, gas stations, and vape shops until zoning ordinances can be reviewed and adjusted. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville. In order to protect public health, safety, and welfare of its residents, it is in the best interest of the city to declare a temporary moratorium on the issuances of permits or other approvals for any package stores, convenience stores, gas stations, and vape shops in order for the city to complete its review of the zoning ordinance as to these establishments. Be it further ordained that this moratorium shall be effective upon passage and publication and shall continue through November the 4th, 2025, unless terminated or extended by action of the City Council. Be it further ordained that establishments which have applied for a building permit or a license through the Alabama Alcoholic Beverage Control Board prior to the effective date of this ordinance will be accepted from the terms of this ordinance. The provisions of this ordinance are severable. If any portion of the ordinance is declared invalid or unconstitutional, such declarations shall not affect the parts which remain. Madam President, I so moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. By point of order, we must suspend the rules in order to vote on item number 4 tonight. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, will you conduct a roll call vote for us, please?
Counselor Sanders?
Yay.
Counselor Jackson?
Yay.
Counselor Chambers?
Yay.
Counselor Merrick?
Yay.
Counselor Whaley?
Yay.
Counselor Bean?
Yay.
The rules are now suspended, and ordinance 4 is now before us. Is there discussion regarding ordinance number 4? Mr. Whaley?
Yes, ma'am. I was originally under the impression that this was going to be in effect for a year. So when the ordinance was published as it is with November the 4th, 2025, I asked some questions there, raised a little concern that that wouldn't give us the time to do what we needed. So I would like to enter a motion to amend Line Number 49 from November the 4th, 2025 to May 5th, 2026.
We have a motion to amend Line 49. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second to the motion to amend. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend? Hearing none. All in favor of amending Line 49 to as Mr. Whaley read it, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. We are now dealing with an amended ordinance. We will now go back and have discussion on the ordinance as amended. Is there any further discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am. I don't know. A couple of years ago, I think I mentioned the issue, mentioned possibly looking at implementing fines, especially for youth that are using these vapes, and as I was reading here, you know, giving rise to safety concerns, and I would like to possibly look into putting some type of ordinance in place where we can possibly find young people, because this is a safety concern, this is on the rise. Like I said, I think I mentioned this two years ago, but I would love for us to look into that, because it's a safety issue, and we need to try to look at protecting our kids and figuring out what we need to do best for them as well, so.
Thank you, and I suggest you work with PD on that. They can really help you out with what's reasonable and what's enforceable. Thank you so much. We know that you work with young people, and I know that's important. Is there further discussion on ordinance number 4? Hearing none. All in favor of the amended version of ordinance number 4, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And ordinance number 4 is adopted. Item number 5 is also an ordinance, I believe this is our last one, to grant a franchise agreement to Knowledgey of Alabama Incorporated, doing business as WOW Internet Cable and Amp Phone, to construct, operate, and maintain a cable system in the City of Prattville, and to set forth the conditions accompanying the grant of the franchise, providing for the regulation and use of the system and the public right-of-way. Counselor Merrick, will you introduce this ordinance by title only, please?
Yes, ma'am. To grant a franchise agreement to Knowledgey of Alabama Incorporated, doing business as WOW Internet Cable and Phone, to construct, operate, and maintain a cable system in the City of Prattville, and to set forth the conditions accompanying the grant of the franchise, providing for the regulation and use of the system and the public right-of-way. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. By point of order, we must suspend the rules in order to vote on item 5 tonight. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, will you conduct a roll call vote for us, please?
Counselor Sanders?
Yay.
Counselor Jackson?
Yay.
Counselor Chambers?
Yay.
Counselor Merrick?
Yay.
Counselor Whaley?
Yay.
Counselor Bean?
Yay.
The rules are now suspended, and ordinance number 5 is properly before us. Is there any discussion on ordinance number 5? Hearing none. All in favor of ordinance number 5, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And ordinance number 5 is adopted. Onto some resolutions. Number 6. Toward Bid Number 025006 to Alexander Seal Coating and Striping Incorporated for the fiscal year 2025 local paving at a total cost not to exceed $1,339,855. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Whereas the City of Prattville has a need to upgrade the paving of various streets within the corporate limits, and whereas the Engineering Department has specifications drafted for said paving project, and where six seal bids were received, opened, and read aloud on April 6, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. in the H.R. Conference Room at City Hall, and Alexander Seal Coating and Striping Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder at a cost of $1,339,855 for said paving project, and whereas this is a budget expense in the gas tax fund, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby awards bid number 025006 to Alexander Seal Coating and Striping Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $1,339,855 for said paving project, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2025 budget line items, gas tax fund, local paving, Spinnas Park paving, and pool and library paving. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on resolution number 6? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number 6, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And resolution number 6 is adopted. Item number 7 is also a resolution to set a public hearing to rezone property located inside the corporate limits at Saratoga Lane and Sidney Drive South, known as Glenbrook 10, from R2 Single Family Residential to R3 Single Family Residential. Counselor Chambers, will you introduce this resolution? Counselor Chambers, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas Blake Rice of BSI Incorporated is the petitioner of the property described in attachment A, and whereas said property to be rezoned is located inside the corporate limits at Saratoga Lane and Sidney Drive South. And whereas the petitioner wishes to rezone the approximately one-hundred-three-point-nine-six acre property to, or from R-two to R-three. And whereas a public hearing on the proposed rezoning was held by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. And whereas the planning commission did recommend the zoning of said property as described in attachment A be amended from R-two to R-three. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that a public hearing is set for June third, two thousand twenty-five at six p.m. on the second floor of one-twenty-four West Main Street. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion, is there a second? And item number seven dies due to lack of second. Number eight, resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Civil Southeast LLC for construction, engineering, and inspection services for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five local street paving project for the engineering department at a cost not to exceed one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Whereas the engineering department has identified a need for construction, engineering, and inspection services for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five local street paving project. And whereas Civil Southeast LLC has the expertise to provide said services at a cost not to exceed one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And whereas section thirty-nine-two-two-D-one Code of Alabama nineteen-seventy-five as amended allows contracts to secure services with engineers possessing a high degree of professional skill to be let without bidding. And whereas this is a budget expense in the gas tax fund, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into said agreement with Civil Southeast LLC for said engineering services at a cost not to exceed one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget line item, gas tax fund, local paving. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number eight? Hearing none, all in favor of resolution number eight, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And resolution number eight is adopted. Resolution number nine is to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget and authorize the release of funds for the purchase of various office furniture through state contracts for the police and fire training facility at a total cost not to exceed one hundred and seven thousand, five hundred seventy-one dollars and four cents. Counselor Whaley, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas a need has been identified to purchase office furniture for the new police and fire training facility. And whereas said office furniture is available through Division Twelve Consulting LLC from state contract number M.A. two-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-two-eight-four-nine via Seating Incorporated for forty-seven thousand, three hundred and six dollars and five cent. State contract number M.A. two-three-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-two-eight-nine-seven-dash-two Kimball International Brands Incorporated for seventeen thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and thirty-five cent. State contract number M.A. two-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-two-eight-one-zero Kruger International Incorporated for thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-eight cent. And Division Twelve Consulting LLC for three thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-six cent. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the FY twenty-twenty-five budget is hereby amended as follows. Increase police equipment maintenance by forty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty-two cent. Increase fire equipment maintenance by fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-two cent. Increase general fund donations, public safety, by fifteen thousand dollars. Increase general fund PFD standby requests by fifteen thousand. Decrease police training and developmental by five thousand. Increase general fund business licenses by sixty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and four cent. Be it further resolved that funds in the amount not to exceed one hundred seven thousand, five hundred seventy-one dollars and four cent for the purchase of said furniture are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to the various vendors. And said funds are approved and appropriated from the FY twenty-twenty-five budget line items, police equipment maintenance and fire equipment maintenance. Madam President, I so move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number nine? Hearing none, all in favor of resolution number nine, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And resolution number nine is adopted. Resolution number ten is to set a public hearing to rezone property located inside the corporate limits at County Road four east and Washington Ferry Road from B-two General Business to R-three Single Family Residential. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Whereas the city of Prattville is the petitioner for the property described in attachment A, where said property to be rezoned is located inside the corporate limits at County Road four east and Washington Ferry Road. And whereas the petitioner wishes to rezone the approximate four-point-one-plus-minus acres property from B-two to R-three. And whereas a public hearing to the proposed rezon was held by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. And whereas the planning commission did recommend the zoning of said property as described in attachment A be amended from B-two to R-three. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that a public hearing is set for June third, twenty-twenty-five at six p.m. on the second floor of one-twenty-four West Main Street. So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion on resolution number ten? Hearing none, all in favor of resolution number ten, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. Resolution number ten is adopted. Now Counselor Jackson, will you read in the ordinance portion of this for us, please?
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows that the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, Alabama, and the zoning map are hereby amended to reclassify the property described in attachment A be amended from B-two to R-three. That this proposed ordinance and a synopsis were advertised for two weeks in the Montgomery Advertiser, a newspaper of general circulation within the corporate limits of the City of Prattville, and that the City Council at its public hearing on June third, twenty-twenty-five at six p.m. consider said proposed ordinance, and that at such time and place all persons who desire had an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to such or, such ordinance. All other items and provisions of the zoning ordinance, not herein specifically amended, shall remain in full force and effect. The amendments herein contained were considered and are recommended by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and executed as provided by law. So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a second. By point of order, this item will hold over until after the public hearing on June the third, twenty-twenty-five. Item number eleven is a resolution to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget and authorize the mayor to enter into an advisory services agreement with Local Government Services LLC to negotiate fiber services agreements between the City of Prattville and Southern Light LLC, United, and Alabama Fiber Network Incorporated at a cost not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars. Counselor Chambers, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas the city has a need to regulate and oversee the provision of fiber services provided in the community and determine compliance with existing franchises regarding the remittance of fiber franchise fees to the city from Southern Light LLC and Alabama Fiber Network. And whereas Local Government Services LLC has the expertise to assist with negotiations of said services at a cost not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars. And whereas section forty-one-dash-sixteen-dash-fifty-one-A-three Code of Alabama nineteen-seventy-five as amended allows contracts to secure services with consultants possessing a high degree of professional skill to be let without competitive building, uh, bidding, excuse me. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget is hereby amended as follows. Increase the general fund franchise fees to fourteen thousand dollars and increase finance miscellaneous contract fees fourteen thousand dollars. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into said agreement with Local Government Services LLC for said services at a cost not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars. And funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget line item finance miscellaneous contract services. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number eleven? Hearing none, all in favor of resolution number eleven, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And resolution number eleven is adopted. Item number twelve is a resolution to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget and authorize the release of funds for roadway maintenance on portions of Ridge Trail, Ridge Terrace, Johnson Street, Robinson Street, Reynolds Mill Road, and Competition Street to Charles E. Watts Incorporated at a cost not to exceed ninety-eight thousand dollars. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas a need has been identified for roadway maintenance updates on portions of Ridge Trail, Ridge Terrace, Johnson Street, Robinson Street, Reynolds Mill Road, and Competition Street. And whereas the engineering department desires to utilize a triple-surface chip seal treatment for this roadway maintenance. And whereas Charles E. Watts Incorporated has the expertise to provide said products and services at a cost of ninety-eight thousand dollars. And whereas section thirty-nine-two-two Code of Alabama nineteen-seventy-five as amended allows contracts for public works projects not exceeding one hundred thousand dollars to be let without bidding. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget is hereby amended as follows. Increase general fund business license, ninety-eight thousand. Increase engineering construction materials, ninety-eight thousand dollars. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in the amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Charles E. Watts Incorporated for said roadway maintenance. And said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget line item, engineering, construction materials. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on item number twelve? May you what? No, sir, there, there's no comment at this time. We have, we had our comment section before, this is the time for us to vote. We don't interact with the audience at this time. I'm sorry, there is, I'm sorry, the audience may not interact with us. Is there any discussion from the council at this time? Hearing none, all in favor of resolution number twelve, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And item number twelve is adopted. Resolution number thirteen is to award bid number zero-two-five-zero-zero-five to Buffalo Rock Company for the fountain and prepackaged beverage rights at Stanley Jensen Stadium. Counselor Merrick, will you introduce this resolution for us?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas a need has been identified for fountain and prepackaged beverage rights for the concession stands at Stanley Jensen Stadium. And whereas Parks and Recreation has specifications drafted for said services. And whereas two sealed bids were received, opened and read aloud on April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five at two p.m. in the H.R. Conference Room at City Hall. And Buffalo Rock Company was the most responsive bidder. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby awards bid number zero-two-five-dash-zero-zero-five to Buffalo Rock Company for a total of five years for the exclusive sale of fountain and prepackaged beverages and advertisement on scoreboards and Stanley Jensen, Stanley Jensen Stadium. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number thirteen? Hearing none, all in favor of resolution number thirteen, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And resolution number thirteen is adopted. Item number fourteen is a resolution to authorize the release of funds for Doster Well Area Site Improvements to Multi Helpers LLC at a cost not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Whereas the engineering department has identified a need for site improvements to the Doster Well area. And whereas Multi Helpers LLC has the expertise to provide said improvements at a cost not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. And whereas section thirty-nine-two-two Code of Alabama nineteen-seventy-five as amended allows contracts for public works projects not exceeding one hundred thousand dollars to be let without bidding. And whereas this is a budget expense in the capital projects fund. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in the amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Multi Helpers LLC for said site improvements. And said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget line item, Capital Projects Fund, Doster Well Improvements. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion on resolution number fourteen? Hearing none, all in favor of resolution number fourteen, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. Resolution number fourteen is adopted. Resolution number fifteen is to authorize the mayor to sign a settlement agreement with Spectrum Southeast LLC, Charter Communications Incorporated, to collect unpaid franchise fees. Counselor Chambers, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas Spectrum Southeast LLC, known as Charter Communications Incorporated, owns, operates, and maintains a cable system in the city of Prattville, Alabama pursuant to a cable television franchise ordinance. And whereas pursuant to the franchise agreement, Charter Communications, Inc., remits franchise fees to the city. And whereas Local Government Services LLC conducted an audit of Charter Communications, Inc. franchise fee payments to the city of Prattville and determined that Charter Communications, Inc. underpaid franchise fees to the city. And whereas Charter Communications, Inc. disputes the amount claimed, but the parties have both agreed on a settlement agreement to resolve all unpaid franchise fees. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized and empowered to sign the settlement agreement with Spectrum Southeast LLC, also known as Charter Communications, Inc. to collect unpaid franchise fees. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion on item number fifteen? Hearing none, all in favor of resolution number fifteen, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And resolution number fifteen is adopted. Resolution number sixteen is to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with C.C. and Litchfield, P.C. for architectural design services for public works street facility building addition for the engineering department at a cost not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Whereas the engineering department has identified a need for architectural design services for the public works street facility building addition. And whereas C.C. and Litchfield, is it C. or say?
You're right, C.C.
C.C. and Litchfield, P.C. has the expertise to provide said services at a cost not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And whereas section thirty-nine-dash-two-dash-two-D-one Code of Alabama nineteen-seventy-five as amended allows contracts to secure services, architects possessing a high degree of professional skill to be let without bidding. And whereas this is a budget expense in the engineering department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into said agreement with C.C. and Litchfield, P.C. for said architectural services at a cost not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget line item, engineering, slash, engineering and drafting. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. And be careful, Counselor Jackson, the second or overhears speaks and starts singing, say, say, say. Is there any discussion on resolution number sixteen? Hearing none, all in favor of resolution number sixteen, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign? Resolution number sixteen is adopted. Resolution number seventeen is to authorize the mayor to enter into an election agreement with No Ink LLC at a cost not to exceed one thousand dollars per election. No Ink, that's right, okay. Counselor Whaley, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas in Resolution Book twenty-twenty-five-
Whereas in Resolution Book 2025, page 019, on January 28, 2025, the City Council of the City of Prattville authorized the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Elmore County Commission, the Elmore County Board of Registars, and the Elmore County Probate Judge for the 2025 municipal elections. And whereas No Ink LLC is the company that services the poll books for Elmore County. And whereas No Ink LLC will need to perform such services and license the software for poll books used by the City of Prattville during the 2025 municipal elections. And whereas the cost for said services is up to $1,000 per election. And whereas this is a budget expense in the City Clerk Department. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby authorizes the mayor to enter into said election agreement with No Ink LLC. Be it further resolved that funds in the amount not to exceed $1,000 per election are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to the Now Ink for said services. And said funds are approved and appropriated from FY 2025 budget line item City Clerk election supplies. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intention of this resolution. Madam President, I so move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number 17? Yes, sir, Mr. Jackson?
Paula, question for you. Do you mind explaining our services with No Ink? I've tried to explain to some of my constituents, but I guess they've watched too many episodes of Scandal, and so I can't explain it. So do you mind explaining?
The poll books that we're going to be using from the Elmore County, they don't do the same thing as Otoga County does, so we have to go into an agreement with No Ink for them to do the same services that Otoga County does. It's just basically uploading the poll list, setting our precincts and election itself into the power profile system. This is just them doing that instead of Elmore County on that portion of it. They're still getting all the other information from Elmore County, though.
Is there further discussion regarding resolution number 17? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number 17, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And resolution number 17 is adopted. This concludes the items on our agenda tonight. And at this time, the council has a need to go into executive session to discuss matters of real estate transaction. We have a letter of approval from our city attorney for this meeting, and we will go ahead and take our closing comments at this time as we plan to conduct no business and no voting after our executive session. So anyone who wishes to come in at this time, we ask that you line up here at the podium, sign your name and address for the clerk, come forward, and you will have three minutes to address us. We do ask that you print your name and address, and you will have up to three minutes to address the council. Please do state your name and address again for us, though. I know.
David Jox, 1021 Oded Road, East Prattville, Alabama 36066. And my concern is, it goes back to 12. There's two roads on 12. The Ridge Terrace and Ridge Trail. Okay, I got a question. In order to be in the city, is it necessary that I request to be in the city?
No, sir. Not at all. Now, if you are in the county and you want to come into the city, then there are several processes to annex you in. And so that would be one process that would allow you to come in if you are outside and you wish to come in. So you could do it by request, and then we would have to look at it. But we can also annex properties without their request.
Can you do it without informing the homeowner?
There would be informational processes that went out before you came in.
Okay. Here's the problem with this. On the north side of that road from Val Ridge all the way to Mill Ridge, to Mill Village, the north side, the other side of the Powell property, that's all county. It's always been county. But right now, the GIS is showing 50/50. It's showing some of it county, it's showing some of it city. I don't know why it's changed. It shouldn't be that way. It never was that way. Somehow, somehow, it got changed. We were county District 1. Now, if I go into the GIS, it says Prattville, it says MU Prattville 02. That's city. We're not city. And I clearly have shown that. I presented that to Paxton. I presented that to you, I believe. And I mean, I don't understand, I mean, I don't mind the road getting done, but all that behind us is county. They bought in the county. I've been there for 25 years. I used to, that was a dirt road when we knew, the Old Ridge Road was dirt. I used to backhoe that road for y'all. I would make it so people could pass. And it got paved. But we never became, we never got annexed. I never got letters. I never got approved for it. I'd be never, there was nothing. There was no one there on that side. Now, some are still county, just like Jake Powell's county on the other side of the road, 50% are still county. But everybody, I got a wall from Mill Village to, everybody that somehow got changed, they want to be back. They strongly oppose city. They want to be back to county, and I got them all right here.
Yes, sir. Well, you will need to work with our city staff, continue to work with that during the week, because that's nothing that we can handle.
But here's the problem, though. How do you, can, can you, I mean, can you can still go forward with that road? I don't mind a chip and seal road. That's under county specs. That's fine. I know you collaborate with the county all the time. But the problem I'm having is that GIS needs to be changed back to the original, the original county, because that's not city.
Mr. Mayor would like to address you.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And again, thank you for coming down. Staff has been researching some documents. There might be some that go back to about 99. So we will be back in touch with you in the next week or so.
Okay.
So we'll, staff is working on it.
Excellent.
We are going through a little bit of a transition with a new city engineer. We have a city planner we're looking for, and we actually have a reveling new GIS person.
Okay.
And, ma'am, city clerk has been here for a while, though.
I know, she has. She's sweet.
If you will, I believe I asked y'all when you did that to submit that package of information that you referenced in your email, if you will give me that or send me that. That way it can help in that research also.
I didn't understand what package that was.
We don't, I mean, I.
We'll discuss it tomorrow.
Okay, we can do that. Okay, yeah, that's fine. Thank you for your time. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Cooper?
Karen Ballard Cooper, 804 Cobblestone Curve. Last week, I attended the library board meeting at Billingsley Library. It began with the librarian giving her update and the update from the teen advisory board. The meeting was chaired by the vice chair, Rachel Daniels, since the chair, Ray Bowles, was not in attendance. The library board meets four times a year. The last time they had met was in February. Rachel, as the chair of last week's meeting, announced in the meeting that there was no new business, then that there was also no old business, and the members stated they had no updates from the committees. I was shocked. They have not met for three months. The library has had building repairs, there have been events, and the community wants to know what the future of our library is, and they had nothing to say. The board is the policy and planning body for the four Talga-Prattville County libraries, and they have nothing to say about any of them. Does this mean that they are doing nothing at all to support the library? Or perhaps does it mean they're doing all their policymaking and planning behind closed doors? We deserve transparency. After meeting, after the meeting, I spoke to a few former library board members. Faithful, wait, served as our library, a few members who served as our library board members faithfully for numerous years. They were also shocked. In the past, there were always items on the agenda, both old business and new. And this was during a time where they met more often, six times a year. But there was always business to discuss. And they also had an agenda, which we have not seen since this board took office. I request for the board to either get busy supporting our library or for the board to become much more transparent about their actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Do any counselors have any questions or comments for Mrs. Cooper? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Jackie, excuse me, Jackie Nix, 706 Running Brook Circle, Prattville. While I am grateful that we have the main branch of the library reopened, our public library is still far from functional. I have many concerns about fiscal responsibility, but let me just focus on one, book purchases. Our library has a budget of about $500, excuse me, $5,000 a month to purchase new books. That translates into roughly 200 to 300 books a month that should be added to our collection, except that the math ain't mathin'. I reported to you last August that the library had stopped purchasing new books after the previous staff had been fired. Councilman Whaley even inquired about it. We were told that that had been fixed, but it wasn't. Last November, I reported to you that a mere 42 of the 158 books added were new releases. I went to the website today to see if this had improved. It hasn't. Out of 201 titles in the just added section, only 91 titles were published in 2025, just 45%. If you scroll all the way down, there's a book from 1958 listed, and many from the 80s and 90s. Don't take my word for it. Go out to the website and look for yourself. Let me remind you that the purpose of a library is to purchase new release books for the public. People want the newest must reads. They want bestsellers. They don't want titles that they can get from a thrift store. Is this board relying on book donations? And if so, where's that money going that was supposed to be going towards new books? The just added section should be filled with over 200 new books, just released books each month. Where are our tax dollars going? Since we, the public, can't get answers, I'm asking you, the council, to look into this. Ask to see invoices for monthly book purchases. Ask what criteria are used to select books to add to our collection. The citizens of Prattville and Otoga County deserve a functioning public library that includes purchases of new release books. If these, if they aren't using these funds to purchase books, we deserve to know where the money's being spent. You have the power of the purse and can stop payment of city funds if the library refuses to be transparent in their operations. Please, we are counting on you to hold this library board accountable for fiscal responsibility. If they refuse to do their job, it is your duty to stop funding their mismanagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nix. Any counselors have any questions or comments for Ms. Nix?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rowling?
Say my name and address again, or? Okay, Diane Rowling, 119 Magnolia Drive. Okay, there was a group of six citizens that flew to Washington, DC, April 2nd through the 4th for a cost of over $10,000. What were your accomplishments, and how did it benefit the citizens of Prattville?
As I have mentioned before, this is not a time when we engage as far as questions. You may ask our questions, and we can get back with you when we can. But this is not a time for dialogue. It's a time for you to express concerns and opinions to the council, and this is not a time where we have a back and forth.
Okay. All right. Another thing with the Riverfield development that was written recently announced. How does this impact the citizens and the use of the facilities of Cooners Pond, also another land? What happened to transparency with this municipality?
Once again, same thing. You're coming to us with questions. Please come to us with concerns.
And for answers on things, then I'll fill out a request, and if I don't get the information for you.
You can always call us, email us, you know, we are available to speak to.
It doesn't always work when you fill out information, fill out notices for information. You don't always get the information.
Well, some of them may not be things that are available for public information requests. So, I mean, some of that is not public information.
I won't argue, but I'm just saying that if I, I'll fill out a request. If I don't get the information, then I'll do it for you.
Call your counselor.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right. We will move into our closing comments now. As I mentioned, we do not plan to do business after our executive session, so we will let the counselors go ahead and have closing comments at this time. Mr. Mayor, any comments?
Just a few, yes, ma'am. Thank you. Since District 6 and Voice of the Lounge is not here, just a quick reminder that May the 16th is going to be Stanley Jensen ribbon cutting, so as many as possible might be able to be there. And we have a lot going on that day as well, but look to be a, think it's going to be a good day for the City of Prattville there. But I think the financial report that we've gotten just shows actually how financially fit and transparent and that we are. I also want to thank, again, all the department heads, our finance team, and for all their hard work. So, Madam President, thank you.
Counselor Sanders, any closing comments?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Jackson?
No.
Counselor Chambers?
Yes, ma'am. Just a couple. First, again, I just want to congratulate Daniel and his finance team, as well as some of the other department heads that had a lot to do with the great 2024 audit results. So thank you and congratulations for doing such a good job. And I haven't heard this mentioned yet, but I guess City Fest has been rescheduled to the 19th of July at the Matt Gray Park Fairgrounds. So just make sure you mark your calendar and look forward to seeing you there.
Counselor Merrick?
Yes, ma'am. I was going to share that great news. Thank you, Chambers. But, but yes, I think, want to thank the chamber for putting on what we thought would be the best, that, you know, by canceling out the second day due to the weather. And I know a lot of folks will say, well, you know, it wasn't really that bad, but we're looking for the safety of our community. I think the band that played Friday night, it was really good. Had to go off to our food vendors that were out over there by the Gillespie Center, and hopefully they'll be back. But yes, also, I want to give a quick shout out to Paxton and the engineering department. And I also want to include Ms. Lisa Byrd for her help. About a, I think a couple of weeks ago, one of my constituents was calling about a pipe that was coming out of the street by Greystone and Pebble Creek. And also, in 12 Oaks Court, there was some, sidewalks were really in bad shape. I actually drove over there, and I mean, it was like going this way. I mean, it was just a real bad cluster. But I made a quick call. Lisa actually answered the phone, got with her, chit-chatted with her a little bit, got engineering involved. And Paxton, they took care of both situations within a matter of days. So thank you, Paxton. Thank you for the engineering department. I also want to take this opportunity to just give a quick little shout out to my family. Yesterday on Cinco de Mayo, I have five family members that were born on the 5th. My father, who passed a couple of years ago, and four of my cousins. We always call it the, I call it the little Cinco de Merrick family gathering birthdays. But I also want to recognize the moms in the building, our moms throughout the community. Wishing you all a happy Mother's Day and wish you all the best, and thank you for what you do to keep us in line. So that's all I have.
Counselor Whaley?
Yes, ma'am. Just quickly, thank you, counsel, for support of the increased time on Agenda Item Number 4. I know that we're looking at the zoning ordinance that is, that is part of that, but I've been working with the PD for a little over six months on some issues in a different section of the ordinance. There's been a lot of concern with the number of liquor package stores, CBD vape shops. And we have been diligently working on some things in the ordinance that will help hopefully keep those from popping up on every single corner of the city. So I know that there's a couple of different ordinance sections that we're working on there for that, but I just appreciate your support on that moratorium, and then also for the extension of that for another additional six months. We all know that there's an election in a couple of months, and it could be an entirely new group of people looking at that ordinance. But I would say that the PD is unaffected by election cycles and will continue to work full steam ahead, along with hopefully our planning department if we can get that position filled. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I would like to ask our financial director to please place the audit material from our new favorable audit onto our website so that that becomes available to us as well as the public, just as soon as that is available, to make that happen. Our next regularly scheduled council meeting will be Tuesday, May the 20th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. At this time, we have a need to go into executive session to discuss matters of real estate transaction. We have a letter of approval from our city attorney for this meeting. Do I hear a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you conduct a roll call vote for us, please? Counselor Sanders?
Yes.
Counselor Jackson?
Yes.
Counselor Chambers?
Yes.
Counselor Merrick?
Yes.
Counselor Whaley?
Yes.
Counselor Bean? Our current time is 7:32. We expect to be in executive session up to one hour. When we return, we will conduct no business and no voting. We are adjourned into executive... The time is now 8:09, and we are returning from executive session. I do call this meeting back to order. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
No, give it to Whaley.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. All in favor, say yea?
Yea.
Opposed, next? We are adjourned.
All right.
Whaley, atta boy.
There's two phones here. Who's they are? Y'all know who's these are?
I don't know.
Y'all know whose phone?